NAACP, Black 30, Loudlight. My name is Ursula Meyer. I'm president of the Lawrence Grinch NAACP. The NAACP partnership with Black 30 and Loudlight is very compatible since our organizations are nonpartisan. Our political activities are focused on voter registration, voter education, and most importantly, voter turnout at the polls. Today's forum offers a special opportunity to ask the candidates questions that are of interest to the communities we represent. Thanks to all the members and volunteers from our organizations who helped prepare for these forums. A special thank you to the Kansas Black Leadership Council and Target for the financial support of today's event. Now let's review this afternoon's format for our candidates in the audience. The questions I will ask were developed by NAACP, Black 30, and Loudlight members. Each candidate received the questions in advance. Each candidate will have a specific amount of time to answer their questions.
Recording in progress.
Our timekeeper will let each candidate know where there's fifteen seconds left to respond, and then the time is up. We're respectfully asked that the candidates stay within the time limit for each question. I will rotate who gives the first answer for each question. Then the next person will answer in so one. The seating arrangement we have today was determined randomly by drawing names. There will be no additional questions from the audience. Instead, we have asked the candidates to stay after the formal question and answer period so that they can visit with them. The NAACP, Black 30, and Loudlight cannot endorse candidates, but the candidates are free to share campaign materials, see volunteers, and answer additional questions in form. Now let me introduce our school board candidates. In order seated is Carol Cadu Blackwood, G.R. Gordon Ross, Yolanda Franklin, Rachel Studdling Bear, Brandon Moore, Anne Castello, and Jody Meyer, who are running for four-year positions. Then we have Ariel Meyer and Shannon Campbell, who are running for two-year terms. Thank you for your participation. Edward Gonzalez is unable to be here and has asked that we read the following statement. "I wanted to extend my heartfelt gratitude for your understanding and support regarding the absence from the recent school board forum. The passing moment of my beloved grandmother was emotionally challenging moment for my family and me. I deeply appreciate your compassion during this time. As a candidate for change in our school district, my commitment to striving for equality and advocating for higher wages for all staff remains unwavering. I firmly believe that every individual within our educational community should have an opportunity to thrive, and I am dedicated to working towards a more inclusive and equitable school system. My passion for this cause is further fueled by the fact that I'm a parent of four children in our district. Two of them have special needs, and this personal experience has given me a profound understanding of the unique challenges and opportunities within our school system. I am determined to ensure that every child, regardless of their abilities or background, receives the quality and education they deserve. Once again, thank you for your understanding and support. I am eager to continue working together to bring a positive change in our school district and make it a place that every student and staff member can thrive." You can find more about me at edwardscampaign.com. Kevin Coronado's name will not be on the ballot, however, he is withdrawn from his candidacy. And now we will begin. It will be, yes. His name will be on the ballot, however, he is withdrawn from the candidacy. Okay, we will start with question number one. What would be your response if a parent or community member challenges curriculum or library materials? We will begin with Carol Cadu Blackwood. We have one minute.
Thank you. The district adopted, adopted forms for such responses that the parents object to whether your students, you know, if they don't want to partake in that type of curriculum. The Kansas Supreme Court in the Gannon versus Kansas decision wrote that their adequacy requirement is met when the public education financing system provided by the legislature for K-12 through structure implementation is reasonably calculated to have all hands in Kansas public education students or exceed the standards set out in Rose. As a board member, I will continue to enforce the Rose standards, specifically number five, which states grounding in the arts to enable them to appreciate their cultural and historical heritage. I will continue to advocate for public schools to teach the truth. The Kansas State Board of Education says that the Rose standards guide its work in overseeing public schools to focus on helping students acquire life skills and prepare for academics and careers." Thank you.
Next, we have G.R. Gordon Ross.
Recently, supported revisions have been made to board policy IF, which sets up a process by which parents and guardians can bring challenges to curriculum and materials. The revisions that we made outline that process and make it somewhat restrictive, but not so restrictive, because we do want to hear if we have curriculum that impedes our ability to do our equity work or impacts the identity or affects individual children. But I will say that I do stand against the banning of books and the banning of curriculum, which is why I've supported the revisions to that policy. Any member of the community that is not a parent or a guardian who shares those concerns, I would invite them to come and present those concerns during board commentary that the school board needs.
Next, we have Yolanda Franklin.
I would let them know that their concerns do matter, and we as a school board are listening to them. This question reminds me of the Parents' Bill of Rights that the governor recently vetoed. This bill was trying to implement to give the parents control over what curriculum was taught in schools and what decisions on rather to have such items removed at their discretion. I would also advise them that in Kansas, even though each school develops their own curriculum, it's the teachers that decide how they will provide instruction to the students. So we must trust the teachers and the staff to make these informed decisions on what has been presented to them to be utilized to educate our children.
Next, we have Rachel Studdling Bear.
So I have a library and information science degree, and so I know that it is crucial to have a collection development policy in place, that it is a guide for by curriculum and library materials are purchased. And in fact, as Gordon Ross mentioned, the school board had did two weeks of summer of this updated policy, which they call IF, this summer. And there is a complaint challenge procedure in place. So the parent approached me, I would see where they are in that process. I can also explain to them why the complaint procedure starts with the teacher, media specialist, or principal. A challenge to materials is not a bad thing. It is always good to double check ourselves about why we have or are using a certain material. But in light of the book banning craze across the U.S., I would explain to them that just because you want something removed does not mean it will be, especially if it was purchased in good faith according to our collection development policy.
Next, we have Brandon Moore.
I agree, we need to allow our teachers and building administrators to make decisions within their four walls. If a family has a fundamental belief that contradicts with a lesson or material that's being taught that falls under protected categories, an alternative assignment should be considered for that, but not just because that they don't like the material that's being taught. We need to make sure that our students are getting a diverse education.
Next, we have Anne Castello.
So books dealing with race, racism, sex, gender, and sexuality are often the targets and challenges. These books, being challenged, are often by marginalized communities or written by marginalized communities. Research has shown that nationwide complaints are largely driven by a few number of people. In 2021 to 2022, eleven people were responsible for sixty percent of book challenges nationwide that were tracked by PEN America. One male alone filed ninety-two challenges. I don't agree with book banning, but I do believe that parents have a right. However, that right strictly pertains to their child and not to everyone else's child. They cannot opt everyone else's child out of the lesson. We do have established policy that I believe should be followed, not only determine what books are appropriate to be taught, but also when a challenge arises, they have that right to do that and follow that procedure.
One of the greatest experiences I've had is reading, was love of public libraries and the ability to read whatever I wanted to. That being said, there may be times where it's gross rate for somebody to have an issue with material. And let's be clear, it's not just LGBTQ materials or other materials. I think there are some that you might find objectionable, as certain members of groups try to put them in the library, or a teacher that might take certain viewpoints at class. I would adhere to district policy and encourage you planning to take it out with a teacher, a library specialist, and with a building principal, and then in accordance with district policy, report to the superintendent. And just to be clear, even though the school board recently changed the policy, having been handling it for a number of years, I confirm it's really well, there have been no formal material challenges or requests for review in the last five years. That's the timeframe I asked for. So this is not been a problem in USD 497.
As an elected board member, I would listen to that member of the public and direct them to the compliance coordinator, and then I would move on. I don't have a lot of patience for book bans or challenging curriculum, especially the ratio of our American history. I look to teachers and librarians to be the authority on the materials in the classrooms and on the library shelves. I'm part of Kansas United for Public Schools, which is a grassroots movement, working to fight the bigotry and the discrimination that is rampant across our country right now. I believe that we need a movement to make actual change in our systems. I think the community should be able to have engagement about materials for sure and opportunity to communicate, but ultimately, I leave that to the teachers and librarians.
So as a parent, I know that it's my job to impart my values to my children, but I do not expect that my values should rule everything that happens in the classroom or in the library in our public schools. It's appropriate that we're answering this question today, this is the last day of ban books week. Efforts to ban books in school and public libraries reached a record high in 2022, and American Library Association is saying that they are on pace to exceed that for 2023. We're facing a growing crisis in education and elsewhere around the ideas of academic freedom, accurate history, and critical thinking. I was pleased to work with my work colleague Kelly Jones to make changes to our board policy so that we would have a strong policy in our district to deal with these circumstances. As a board member, I would encourage parents and community members to follow that policy, and I will always err on the side of trusting our professional educator's judgment about what materials are appropriate for our students. Thank you.
Next, we will go to question number two. How do school finance statutes impact school board decisions? We will start with Gordon Ross.
Understanding school finance laws are crucial for board members because those laws, and specifically how the legislature implements them, is imperative because it impacts all of what we do. For instance, this last year, the underfunding of special education cost our district almost four million dollars from our general fund that we had to use to cover special education services. That's money that we could have used to help reduce class sizes, wages, or add to the school program. It's important because we, as board members, need to grasp those policies. We need to grasp how those policies impact the work that we do, the middle fees, and the taxing authority that we have, and how those all play together as we put together a budget, and how we understand things like budget, budget authority, enrollment, and total calculated enrollment as we do our job.
Next, we will have Yolanda Franklin.
We are responsible for our local budget. Yes, we do get funding from the state, and yes, we know that state is severely underfunded. But we are still responsible for our local budget. We know that state laws have to be followed, and we know that these laws will limit us on our decisions. So we need to continue to work and get our schools fully funded at the state level. But we also need to make sure we're keeping the funds equitable between our schools and keep our dollars close to our kids. For example, why is one school having to do fundraisers for school equipment and another school is getting their funding through the district? This is why we need a people-funded, people-powered movement to make sure our funding goes to our students.
Next, we've got Rachel Studdling Bear.
So the school finance statutes tell us the formula for the school funding and in what ways schools can raise money and how much states can raise the taxes. Based on how much money we receive determines where we need to focus to cover our costs. The main things in the budget are staff wages and daycare insurance costs, building maintenance, utilities, special education programs, food for breakfast and lunch, technology costs, et cetera. And for me, as somebody who'd like to be on the school board decisions, I want to make sure that our students are receiving or the funds that are going towards our students and making sure that they are getting the education that they need.
Next, we have Brandon Moore.
Yeah, the statutes play a huge role in our budget, and it's a lot more than anybody can explain in sixty seconds. You know, my main concern is the current funding for basic for student excellence, which is what the state uses to fund us, is four thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. In nineteen ninety-two, it was three thousand six hundred. If you adjust that for inflation, we should be getting seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seven cents. Doing the math, that's a difference of four thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seven cents. We're not going to be able to fix that overnight with the legislature, so we've got to learn how to do more with less. I'm sure most of us in here, over the course of the last few years, have learned how to do more with less, a little bit more mac and cheese and hot dogs every once in a while and driving a bit less. So we have to learn to buckle down as a district as well and to make smart decisions with our money, and we're not always doing that, so we need to be able to be more focused.
Next, we have Anne Castello.
So the board must live within the constraints that have been set by the legislature. In that regard, finance does impact every budget decision that's made. To begin with, some funds can be republished, but those that we cannot. Since those funds cannot be republished, the general fund must be published at a higher rate than anticipated expenditures. And if we initially publish too low and then try to republish higher later, the LBE would be less than the thirty-three percent, and we'd lose state funding. This is just an example. The state determines the base aid per pupil, and like Brandon said, the legislature is consistently underfunded in education, in part by keeping that low. We take a fifty-five percent increase in base aid from the nineteen ninety-two level, when adjusted for inflation, to just be equal to that amount of money. The legislature, as many have said, doesn't fund special education at their statutorily required level, and we are barred from general funding to cover. I will continue to advocate for our schools, our school district, for funding at the state local and national levels, and I encourage the community to do the same. We need to better organize as a collective to improve and advocate for funding in Topeka.
Next, we have Jody Meyer.
School finance statutes impact probably every aspect of a school board decision. School finance statutes control how much money we receive from the state, how much money is locally, and control the manner in which we are permitted to use that money. I think that taxpayers and the public sometimes don't understand when they see a gross dollar amount, how we can use it or why we can't use it for certain purposes. We are limited today, we can spend that money. For example, under state laws, schools can only spend at this funding on evidence-based programs that are referred by the State Board of Ed and back to a curriculum research that shows a different gap comes around to students. The state does audits on these things and recently noticed that money in some school districts wasn't used appropriately, for example, office supplies with at this funds, TAs, D and C memberships, et cetera. So, you know, when we think about how we have to budget for each category of items, we're limited by the statutes, and one day it allows us to spend money on certain categories. Thank you.
Next, we have Ariel Meyer.
We are certainly limited by state finance laws, and we are still very underfunded in sp, which removes money from our general fund and limits us, absolutely. But we also need to be fiscally responsible locally. We do not have to spend money on consultants to the level we do. We do not have to send our money to other states like Boston for virtual school advertising. We don't have to make those choices. We don't have to pay administrators the salaries we pay. We don't have to pay the superintendent the salary we pay. We have to be more responsible with our funds and keep our dollars as close to our students and our teachers and our classrooms as possible. Thank you.
Next, we have Shannon Campbell.
So as other candidates have mentioned, school finance statutes have an enormous impact on the work that we do as a board in this area. We're constrained in a multitude of ways by the rules that are in place and also by the rules that say how we can spend that money. For example, base data for people. If we want to reduce class sizes across our district, we have to figure out how to rearrange the dollars that we're getting. We're not allowed to go out and raise taxes to achieve those ends. So decisions as a board are often about how do we meet the goals that we have when making difficult decisions, and how do we weigh the different values that are at play in trying to decide how to allocate those resources. That's where my experience and expertise on the board has been really valuable over the last several years. It's important when you're trying to figure out how to be equitable in using those resources. You know, part of our responsibility is to look at the system as a whole, and you cannot insist that one part of the system function poorly and expect good outcomes for students. Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Cadu Blackwood.
Thank you. I would like to echo what my colleague has said, Brandon Moore, about we need to be doing more with less. I like the analogy of eating more than I thought, and my house is a lot of peanut butter to structure dollars. But I have advocated in Topeka for public schools, and I've advocated to the General Assembly Council for the White House for public education, for Indian education. And I think that we all can agree that we need to urge our lawmakers to stop siphoning away public dollars, tax dollars into private schools. For example, we need to have greater communication with our community partners. The Douglas County Commission approved the Lakota language and heritage grant for the Limestone Community School. USD 497, the USD 497 school board closes schools and other communities build schools. The Limestone School gives hope to neighborhoods like East Lawrence where I grew up. The school was created by a former USD 497 educator to provide an alternative learning, to provide alternative learning. Today, we don't have any indigenous languages in USD 497, and yet we have Haskell and Unions University. We can develop a stronger partnership with Haskell that mirrors the Javapack. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to question number three. What is your plan for improving academic outcomes for minority students? We will start with Yolanda Franklin.
We have been fighting. We've been fighting for academic acceptance since schools was desegregated in nineteen fifty-four. Sixty-nine years. Sixty-nine years we've been fighting to not be considered just an afterthought in the public school system. So my plan is to try to put more of us in some of these decision-making roles, to see if I offer more free mental health services to our minority students, and to help establish and implement an academic curriculum centralized more towards them and their unique learning
Next, we'll have Rachel Studdling Bear.
I know many of our schools have made goals that over this year and the next two years to work on this issue. As a school board member, I would like to delve deeper into how they are working on these goals, what are the plans behind them. We need more mentorship programs. I know the school district just recently announced a partnership or called one initiative that will work on reading, but we also need mentorship programs to focus on math and science. This is also where it's important to redesign our curriculum to reach the students. Sometimes putting an application into practice or explaining a concept using different words can open up a new way of understanding, and we need to know where schools are starting from. We can't ask someone who is working on fractions to sit and do geometry.
Next, we'll have Brandon Moore.
This was a tough question for me. I may be the standard white male up here, but I have a very diverse family. My stepdad is an African-American male. I have two stepbrothers, which I just call my brothers, that have six kids between them, so my nieces and nephews are all African-American children, and they live in lower-income neighborhoods in Lawrence. And they went to these lower-income schools that got closed. And two of them are on IEDs. And we closed a neighborhood schools, and now we're trying to figure out why they're struggling in school. And it baffles me. Why are we closing these neighborhood schools with higher minority students, and they don't have good outcomes? Why didn't we look at closing the West Side schools? Why are we not adding diversity to East Side schools that can naturally increase scores for our minority students? When schools are better integrated, everyone wins.
Next, we have Anne Castello.
Our schools need to develop a culture of authentic care that is grounded in compassion, discipline, and high expectations. It includes the acceptance of students' cultural backgrounds, values, beliefs, and ways of being. The instruction should be student-centered, and that it's culturally responsive, appropriate, compatible, and relevant. We also need to develop cultural power to sustain in our teachers and staff. This involves developing personal and interpersonal awareness and sensitivities. It will help teachers successfully teach students whose cultures are different. It does take time to develop, though. We must value diversity in practice, self-reflection, engage wholeheartedly with students, families, and communities as we take part in transformative actions that can actually lead to change. Other important steps are to improve small group instruction and strengthen the connection between home and school. Many studies have shown a direct relationship between student achievement and involved and informed community. As a district, we need to do a better job of engaging our community. I'd like to see more opportunities for conversations between us and the community, not just commentary at board meetings, but actual conversations. Thank you.
Next, we have Jody Meyer.
Sorry, not holding close enough to the time. I feel like this is a topic that has been discussed now for some years, and I don't really know what has been done. I would note that the recent school board meeting where we discussed TNC, that it was noted that Native American or Alaska Native and Black students were the most crime-free absent racial suburbs, with forty-six percent of Native American, Alaska Native states crime-free absent, and thirty-eight percent of Black students. According to the Native American Student Services website, Mass. serves around five-hundred-and-thirty students. I'm doing this math. Two-hundred-and-forty-four of those students are chronically absent. Are we focusing like major beam on getting these kids to school? If they're not in the building, the outcomes aren't going to improve. I mean, that's something the teachers have said time and time again, is they have to be there in order to improve in other domains. If they're not in the building, have we obtained the data on why they're not there? I didn't hear that at the TNC meeting. If not, why not? Are we, where are we in getting these students their seats? Do we have a target approach to improving academics and specifically focusing on their IEDs and Bible core plans? So that, I think, needs to be the focus of getting them there and then working on the academic component.
Next, we have Ariel Meyer.
So just a hundred and sixty years ago, it was a crime to teach Black people to read and write, only a hundred and sixty years ago, and we are still failing them. I have a minority student. I have, my oldest son is multiracial, and I can tell you that we're still failing these students in our schools, his friends. I think one of the best things we can do is focus on low class sizes. We know, we have data that says that smaller class sizes help our minority students most. Staffing stability...
Staffing stability, I think that we need to have less turnover in our district because students need to know they can trust their teachers. When we are constantly getting new staff, you cannot build those relationships that are built on trust. And we know that we have to have trust in order to have an open mind to learn, especially for our minority students.
Next, we have Shannon Campbell.
To improve our outcomes, we cannot take our votes away from looking at the data and acknowledging what it tells us. I believe that we have made a specific focused effort to do that in this district that has been sustained over a number of years. It is reflected in board policy, it is reflected in the discussions we have at board meetings. And we are seeing progress. This last year, our graduation rates held steady or increased in all of our subgroups for our minority students and otherwise. We are seeing increases in state assessment scores in our subgroups for our minority students as well. It is admittedly not as much progress as we would like to see, but we are getting there because the things that we are doing around rigorous instruction, academic opportunities, encouraging students to take challenging classes, culturally relevant curriculum, those things are working and we need to continue that sustained focus and I'm going to do that as a board member as I have been doing for the past twelve years. Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Cadu Blackwood.
Thank you. I think the most fiscally responsible thing to do would be to work alongside in partnership with the Douglas County Health Department to create an equity impact analysis to see how the school cultures have impacted our neighborhoods where we closed the schools. This has the potential to reduce costs, provide intercultural proficiency, to better understand and value the cultural needs, background and experience of our BIPOC, LGBTQ+ TOS students. Pushing people out of these neighborhoods can change the composition of the neighborhoods and drive families out, creating greater justification. We need to have greater involvement from the community, having to get a trust and find some agreement on what is best for the community, the community that I call my hometown. We need to invest in those students and schools who are failing behind, falling behind or in buildings that we say are underutilized rather than starve them out and close them. I think that where we can begin is working with the health department. Thank you.
Next, we have G.R. Gordon Ross.
I think in order to improve academic outcomes, we need to continue the work that we've done over the last few years, which is a two-pronged approach. We need to look at the data that we have, we need to evaluate that data, but we also need to actually talk to the students. So, we need to give the students lived experience with what we've been doing. And we need to look at where the data, where we were, where we're going, and where we want to be, and then adjust accordingly. We need to make sure that the work that we're doing is actually taking us in the right direction. And as Shannon said, we are headed in the right direction, maybe not as quickly as we want to get there, but we are seeing improvements. And as we analyze that data, as we look at specific things related to our strategic plan, like reading comprehension by the third grade, math, math, math readiness by the eighth grade, as we implement things, we also need to be willing to involve those groups, impact them in those decisions, and make sure that anything that we implement, if it's not working, to try something else.
Next, we have question number four. What role does implicit bias have in the large educational system? And what would be your solution to solve this issue? We will start with Rachel Studdling there.
So, implicit bias is an unacknowledged bias that affects judgment, behaviors, and attitudes, and we all have them. In order to change this, we have to learn what our biases are, so we have to do the work. For school setting, that means school board members and staff need to undergo training to find out what their biases are and how to recognize them, and then to continue the training of how to remove those biases from our thoughts and actions and put those actions in place. And to follow up, we need to be working with our diverse population of our students and families to find out how they feel in our schools. They are telling us and we're not always hearing, and that is a problem. We need to set up a reporting system where students and staff can report incidences and we need to set clear, firm expectations of what behaviors are appropriate.
Next, we have Brandon Moore.
Unfortunately, implicit bias never go away. But awareness and education can help reduce and make you aware of it so that you can help it, reduce and keep it from driving decision-making. Just a quick poll, how many people have to watch a video for training at work? Yeah, I see a lot of people. How many people actually pay attention to that video or just click through it? Yeah, most of us, right? We can't, we can't do some backup program that's going to give the teacher or the paraprofessional or the food service worker a video to watch. This needs to be live, in-person training, taught by somebody who is experienced in this, that knows how to do that training, right? That's what's going to be able to help us learn what your biases are and learn how to be able to put those aside so that you can be the best version of you to not have those impact your teaching and your viewpoints of how to be able to interact.
Next, we have Anne Castilla.
So, implicit bias can create barriers to opportunity and achievement for some students. It can make them more likely to face suspension or expulsion than it appears and less likely for them to be screened for gifted services. There are many ways we can combat this. First, we as a district need to increase the diversity of teachers and school leaders. Having more leaders of color could help change the structures that perpetuate these biases. And representation matters. It's important for students to see themselves reflected in adults that are guiding their education. As a district, we can use data to uncover the trends of disparate treatment of individuals that may otherwise go unnoticed. Next, we need to reflect on our own biases. There are tools and trainings available that can help identify our biases. We should also solicit feedback from outsiders and/or students, especially if unconscious biases are manifesting. It's important to ask ourselves to consider situational circumstances that could have impacted a student's behavior rather than our stereotype. We should encourage one another to take these reflective steps. It is critical to identify and acknowledge implicit biases in order to mitigate the effects.
Next, we have Jodi Meyer.
I was reading an article recently about implicit bias discussing the unconscious and split-second ways in which implicit bias operates. And when I think about that, I think about disciplinary issues for a moment. And the more subjective your rules are, I think the more open to interpretation we are, the more likely implicit bias is going to step in and make judgment calls about that, even without any intention. And so, I think as a district, when it comes to decision-making, and whether this is with students or employees or a relevant category, is we need to be making criteria for decision-making as objective as possible rather than relying on subjective factors, which I think is where the implicit bias was set.
Next, we have Ariel Meyer.
So, I think everybody's in agreement that implicit bias is a thing and that it's everywhere and it's in all of us and it's certainly in our schools. I think education is the first thing we can do. Maybe we need to put some curriculum in our schools about implicit bias and make sure that we celebrate our differences, that we are exposed to people who speak differently, work differently, act differently. I think that if we're going to have police in our schools, we need to have some really intense implicit bias training that is continual and ongoing. And I think that the more that we hold events that bring us together in all parts of our city, the more we can decrease implicit bias in our community.
Next, we have Shannon Campbell.
So, of course it exists because it exists within our society and as a school board and as a district, we have to take steps to disrupt the impact of that in our schools. This is work that our district has been doing. I've been leading, advocate for that work on the board. I helped co-opt the district's equity policy. I've supported efforts to equitably distribute resources, access to technology, expansion of coursework for our students, and paying tuition for those students who need support to access it. Implementing restorative practices so that we reduce disparity, racial disparities in our discipline data, expanding access to high-quality early childhood opportunities through the Early Candidate, Early Childhood Center, New York Montessori partnerships with others in the community. So, there are lots of things that we are doing. I think it's also important that we understand what our district actually looks like. For example, the three schools in our district that have the highest enrollment minority students in them are actually Schuyler, Sunflower, and, let me make sure I gave you the right name, Homecrest. It's important to understand what the district looks like as a whole in order to be able to have the impact on this issue within our schools.
Next, we have Carol Cadu Blackwood.
Thank you. I, my day job is a social worker at the Kansas City Indian Center. One of the perks of my job is I, I don't, is it on? Let me see. Hopefully it doesn't affect my time. It's not on. Can everybody hear me? Yes, I don't know if I'm on the microphone. But in my day job, one of the perks is that I get to provide diversity, equity, and inclusion trainings to, for the Kansas, University of Kansas Medical Center. But I'm also a product of large public schools. I obtained my public education, K through twelve. I have an associate's from Haskell, a bachelor's from the University of Kansas, and a social degree, a master's in social health care from the University of Kansas with clinical focus. But, you know, I experienced some base racism as a student at Lawrence Public Schools. I was, you know, I told, I was told by one of my teachers in grade school that I would never finish. She told me in front of the class that I would never finish. And she said, "I bet you that big dollar you'll never finish high school." And later on in high school, one of my teachers referred to me as chief and told me that was a term of entertainment. And even today, as I sit here on this board, I've heard microaggressions such as a low man on a totem pole. And just last week, I heard somebody complain to me that somebody said they were going to have a powwow instead of using the word meeting. So, these things still exist today. And yes, I agree with Rachel that we do need a reporting system because it's just happening today. Thank you.
Next, we have G.R. Gordon Ross.
The district offers a lot of different, different ways to address this. A lot of things that the district has done for, I think, close to two decades is an in-person multi-day training called Beyond Diversity that it offers to all staff. And I think at this point, after almost two decades, it's almost time that we go beyond that because we've done that. We've also implemented a new curriculum for our students as well this year. But I think it's important as we do that, called Character Strong, to also help that as well. But I think it's important that we do the work individually. You know, we have to make sure that our actions have a positive impact. When we make a mistake, that we own it, that we apologize for, that we're always learning and growing, that we make sure that we have representation anytime we're making decision-making and that the right people are at the table. And that we maintain our commitment to making every decision through the equity lens that we've always done within this district.
Next, we have Yolanda Franklin.
Implicit bias is described as a form of bias that occurs automatically and unintentionally. But nevertheless, it affects judgment, decisions, and behaviors. It should not play a role in our education system, but it does. From how disciplined actions are handed out to how students perceive with the way they are dressed, there is no simple solution for this, but this is a learned behavior. So, we have to start at the top. We need more color on the school board. We need to present opportunities for students and staff to engage in discussions within safe environments. And we also need to spend more time with people outside of our usual social groups.
Next, we will have question number five. What are the biggest challenges facing our public schools and how would you address those challenges? We will start with Brandon Moore.
Number one challenge is that we are having a staffing crisis in our school district. Our staff does not feel important, understood, or energized, which are my big three that I've lived with throughout my career. They, we've lost a record number of staff over the last several years. Most of you have seen in the journal world, the Kansas Times, they're writing tutorials and saying exactly how unhappy and unappreciated they felt. We, I agree that the board did do a lot this last year to give races out. It wasn't enough and they still feel unsupported. I was asked to run by staff members to be able to make change. We need to do more to make sure that not only have the staff is paid well, but that they feel supported. They need to make sure that they feel supported by the admin staff and by the community that supports them.
Next, we have Anne Castilla.
I think the top three challenges are all connected. First, as I previously mentioned, we need the legislature to fund our schools at an appropriate level and stop trying to divert money from public schools into private schools under the guise of school choice and vouchers. Second, we need to be able to retain and attract great staff. In order to do so, our salaries need to be competitive. We need to pay our classified staff a living wage and our class sizes need to be reduced. This all takes money. Next, we must close the achievement gap for students of color, students with low socioeconomic backgrounds, and students receiving special education services. Teacher turnover can have an impact on this achievement and if we can stabilize that, it will help our students. Instruction should be student-centered. We should encourage students with non-traditional technical courses to take those classes. Virtual enrollment can also have a positive impact on student achievement. Past sense, we must foster closer cooperation between parents and schools. The past few years have caused our community to lose trust in the district and we must work to build that back. The easiest way is to improve transparency in our decision-making.
Next, we have Jodi Meyer.
This was a pretty broad question we had asked. What's the biggest challenge facing our public schools? Generally speaking, referring to public schools, I think the biggest challenge is not having the consistency in funding or adequately funding the designated return by the Kansas Supreme Court. The last twenty years have been fraught with legislative fights and litigation over school funding. As a practicing attorney myself, I already made decisions and it's kind of embarrassing the back and forth that's going on. But to the extent that we can't control a lot of that, I mean, I do think that as board members, that we can provide testimony and help our legislators advocate, but that is largely being our control. I think on a more micro level, I think we are talking about quality of life for staff and teachers. I do think we're talking about more class size. As somebody who substitute teaches occasionally, which I did a couple weeks of that before of my foot injury, it makes a big difference having a middle school classroom with thirty-seven kids. I mean, try it, it's not for the faint of heart. And taking care of the discipline issues in school, at the high school level right now, they're pretty severe.
Next, we have Shannon Campbell. Ariel Meyer, I'm sorry.
I think the biggest challenge we have is that our state legislature is pushing school choice, vouchers, privatization initiatives. And I believe that our local school district leaders also share those initiatives and that is why our teachers and our principals and our staff are fleeing this district. I think it's very important that we elect local school board members that understand this problem so that we can, the movement of school board members across Kansas who also understand this problem, so that everyday Kansans understand this problem, that we need to fight for our legislators, elect representatives at the state level who will fully fund our public education in Kansas because our children deserve it.
Next, we have Shannon Campbell.
All right, I want to say with absolute clarity that I do not share any initiatives to privatize public education and in fact, I have been fighting against them pretty aggressively through all different kinds of avenues in my work for the past decade. In fact, just this week, I was in Topeka on Tuesday at a hearing where a lot of this was being featured by our legislative leadership. And I would encourage all of the candidates on this stage, you go back and watch that hearing so that you can understand exactly how hard this fight is that's going on in Topeka. And that is the fight that is going to be the biggest challenge that we face in the district because everything they are doing over there really impacts what we are able to do here for our students and our staff and our families. So, I'm going to keep doing that work, just as I have been doing. I do not believe that any of our district leadership is involved in or shares any efforts to privatize our schools. The teacher pipeline is another area that I think is going to be a big challenge for us. There's been almost a thirty-five percent decrease in the number of people entering teacher prep programs. We have to adjust our practices to address that.
Next, we have Carol Cadu Blackwood.
In my three and a half years in the board, I have a greater understanding of school funding and its impacts on the community. Our budget shows our priorities one hundred percent. It has been my experience that
It has been my experience that the budget office makes a presentation to tell us board members to tell us what, how, why we need to use a budget formula that is comparable to other districts. We closed schools based on these presentations. Just this week, as Joey Meyer said, the, the Kansas Legislature Special Committee on Education honed in on a July 2023 legislative audit that examined how schools used more than $400 million in out-of-recent funding during the 2021 school year. A sample of 20 Kansas's nearly 300 public schools, districts found that schools had misspent approximately 30% of the $5.2 million in out-of-recent expenditures reviewed by auditors on other allowable expenses. Auditors emphasized they could not project a percentage of misspent funds to the broader pool of average funding in Kansas. To that end, we need to look at how to prevent schools that are underperforming in educators' homes and the public on school funding before we rely on other districts' budget formulas.
Next we have G R Gordon Ross.
I think the two biggest challenges facing us are closing the opportunity gap and supporting our LGBTQI plus students. I think any, any work that we can do to close that opportunity gap impacts all students because any of that work that we do impacts across the board. So looking at that data, interviewing those students, talking to them, getting their input on, on how, on how we can close that gap impacts everybody. And then our school district, every building, every place needs to be someplace where every student feels loved, supported, and welcomed. And the work that we can do within the walls of our buildings to address and counter the effects of SB 180 is vital. It's going to take, everyone is going to take a lot of work, but it's vital work because it's, in the end, it can save life.
Next we have Yolanda Franklin.
I agree with everyone about the, the funding and the challenges. I believe one of our biggest challenges is that we're not preparing our students for real life. Yes, we have the highest graduation rate, but what does that mean when they're not properly prepared for life? Can they balance a checkbook? Do they know how to fill out a job application? Can they hold down a job? Especially our minority students who don't have access to all resources. They have access to few resources. So our minority students' lives are impacted from the time that they graduate from high school. So that's our biggest challenge is that we need to start preparing our children for real life.
Next up, Rachel Stunlinder.
I also think that the funding is one of our biggest challenges. Not the good and bad of funding so that we can pay our teachers adequately so that we can fund our special education means. I also think that here in this district, we have, the district has not done a very good job showing the programs that it is doing. We're not seeing actually what is happening in the district. And I'm not talking necessarily negative things, I'm also talking about the positive things. We, we recently had an article about our media specialist who has won an award. How many people knew about that before that article came out? So I think that we have a big perception issue in the city that we don't always know what is going on or we follow human nature and we only look at the negative.
Next we will go to the last question, question steps. What would you like to say in closing? We will start with Andy Estella.
I'm dedicated to justice and equality for all members of our community, including students and staff. If elected, I will work to actively promote equality and inclusivity by addressing achievement gaps, reducing disparities in resources and opportunities, and creating a safe and welcoming environment for all students regardless of their race, gender, socioeconomic status, et cetera. Providing equitably distributed funding that supports the needs of all students, including those with diverse earning abilities and backgrounds, is a critical responsibility of the board when overseeing the allocation of financial resources, and is something I fully support. I want to ensure that we incorporate diverse perspectives and experiences into our curriculum to ensure that students are exposed to a wide variety of voices and ideas. I will champion policies that protect and support our LGBTQ plus students, ensuring that they have access to safe spaces and resources. I will promote a zero tolerance policy for bullying and harassment in our schools, ensuring that all students and staff feel safe and respected. I will support efforts to increase diversity and representation amongst school staff and leadership positions. I will actively listen to the concerns and experiences of students, staff, and parents who marshalize communities and use that feedback to inform policies and decision-making. I will continue to advocate for equitable funding, resources, and opportunities in our schools, especially those in underserved communities. My commitment to justice and equality extends to all members of our community and will work to create an educational system that is fair, inclusive, and free from oppression in any form. Thank you.
Next we have Joey Meyer.
I guess I'm a bit more of a realist when it comes to these issues. And I'm more interested in what makes them own practical solutions. Instead of, I think there's a lot of talk of they generally. Now, I've got three kids in Lawrence Public Schools, two of them are at K now, and one is at high school level and a substitute teacher. I don't want to keep barking on that, but the things that you observe when you're a teacher, even as a substitute teacher, by being present in the classroom, by seeing them, by talking to the teachers, lets you know what is happening in schools. Candidate classes of 37 kids, kids who in some ways have been behind because of being online during COVID. I mean, this, this morning, the loss that we've had, and it's real. You talk to the teachers, it's real. We can't continue educating like we have in the past. The increased class sizes, I think that's going to hamper that. I don't know if the inclusion is getting more pairs in the classroom to help out with teachers. The middle schools, I think, are actually particularly bad with the overload of kids in classrooms and the discipline issues. I think to some degree, we ought to look at perhaps putting another secondary building administrator in the building. It's literally whack them over the problems in the building. I mean, they're spending their time, the principal, assistant principal, on, on dealing with what's on fire that day. And then when we get to the high school level, we've got kids having sex at school, we've got vaping rampant, we've got fistfights. I just watched two videos of fistfights at Lawrence High last week. And kids are not able to focus when they have all these other things going on at school. And that's the type of thing that we need to focus on, like a laser beam. Getting kids your major like, in at school, and then we can work on bringing that back. That's the thing of the day for me.
Next we have Yolanda Franklin.
In closing, I would just like to say that when I first decided to run, all the problems felt just huge and I felt pretty alone. But I joined Kansans United for Public Schools, which is a grassroots movement to work to get our schools fully funded. And I certainly feel less alone and that there are, that it's actually possible to solve some of these huge problems that underlie our, underfunding of our schools. We need to have more equitable resources among our district. We, we have to use the power of people, and that means that we need everyone to join Kansans United for Public Schools because what we have been doing is not working. It's got, it's going to take more than one person, it's going to take all of the organizations that we have in Lawrence working together to get our schools fully funded because that's how we're going to get the resources to our children in our classrooms.
Next we have Sharon Campbell.
Lawrence is one of the greatest places in Kansas to live and raise your family. It's why I have it here, it's why I have been a proud here. I've been a student for nine and seven students for many years. Our values of equity and diversity are evident in our community and in our schools. And I believe that every student in our community and every family deserves a top-notch education. And that is something I believe to my core and is why I have served and why I hope to continue to serve on this board. We've faced a lot of challenges in the last few years. I have tried very hard to be a voice of stability, of honesty, and of real solutions at the board table. I've worked hard in groups in Lawrence, at K Lawrence, and across the state. I came on for Kansas Schools, K S B, K M E A, USA Kansas. There are all kinds of groups out there doing this work to advocate for the needs of our students and students everywhere, and I am a part of that and will continue to be a part of that. Because doing what is best for every student and every family, as well as our staff, is what has to happen. Our work has to be informed by a deep understanding of our district and the challenges that we face, but also the possibilities going forward. We've made progress despite these challenges, and I'm really proud of that work. There are good things happening in Lawrence Public Schools. We need to embrace those, we need to repeat those everywhere that we can to make sure that we are doing the best that we can for our kids and for our families and our staff. I'm asking for your support and your vote on November 7. Thank you for being here today. Thank you to N A A C P, Lab Light, and Black Thirty for offering this opportunity for all of us.
Next we have Carol Cadu Blackwood.
Thank you. I would like to thank the Lead Center and Lab Light and N O S C P and I V for providing this beautiful building today. We need to take a deep dive into the budget and see where we can provide better wages for our staff. We need to have a robust public school boundary conversation so we can not move forward at the speed of trust. This doesn't mean that the school will be closed, but that we need to reconfigure how to best use our school sites to work responsibly with class sizes. We need to work on creating a tax incentive policy that holds companies or businesses accountable to make sure that it benefits the community. We cannot continue to give away thousands or potentially millions of dollars to companies and not get anything out of it. I've worked with vulnerable populations and recognized the need for mental health supports. We have heard time and time again during the school closure process that mental health was cited. We will continue to hear about class to work grabbing. We can redistribute students to schools that need students and staff. Whenever we make the decision to give out tax incentives, close schools, and raise the male levy, we tell the community they are not worthy. These are big decisions that contribute to disparate outcomes. I did not run the closed schools. I've been here in Lawrence since 1978, and I'm not going anywhere. I want to continue my work for public education at the local, state, and national level to lift up our public schools. And I'm proud to be alongside, shoulder to shoulder with members from the Kansas United Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Next we have G R Gordon Ross.
I firmly believe in the power of public education because I'm a product of public education. My mom served on the school board when I was at middle school, and high school has set a great example to me of what it means to be a public servant and serve your community. I believe in public education because of the opportunity that my kids have had in this school district. My wife and I have five children, three of which are a product of this school, this system, and two of which are at Lawrence High School. And they have been afforded incredible opportunities. And I've spent five years on the, on the school board, working and fighting to make sure that every student in this district can and has the opportunity to, to receive those same opportunities. I'm also a big believer in the power of local elections. Local elections are the better of our democracy, and I thank you for being here because your vote matters. Participating in local elections is a significant thing that you can do. During my almost five years on the board, I've had the opportunity to, to work on the Founder Committee and the Negotiations Committee and the Facilities Committee. And the work that I've been able to do there is to help work on the opportunity gap and also to work on staff wages. I'm asking for your support on November 7th to, to continue the work that I've done to support staff, to work on increasing wages, to provide them the, the space and the materials that they need and to continue to provide students with what they need to find success at their graduation.
Next we have Yolanda Franklin.
We need to be building a grassroots movement that will include teachers, staff, students, parents, and all the community members to make a real, true, everlasting change starting here in Lawrence. We have got to work together to get the change we're wanting for our children. There's never been an I in team, but there is one in united. So it's going to take more than one person lobbying at the State House. It's going to take more than one person sitting in a meeting with the governor. What's it going to take? It's going to take a community working together as one to get the community level change done that we need so desperately here in Lawrence. I am here. I am willing to work. I'm working with the Cubs Movement, and I will continue to work. And I want everyone to join us in getting us to the place I know we can reach as a Lawrence community.
Next we have Rachel Stunlinder.
This past April, I chose to run because I realized that I needed to put my mouth, put my, you can put, or my mouth is, put action into place. I strongly believe in public education. I know that a learning is a lifelong skill, and it's a skill that is first gained during these years, kindergarten through 12. So if we are not reaching our students to start learning the skill so that they can enjoy to learn, then as they go off into life, they're not going to be prepared. When they have questions, when they're outside of their parents' homes, they might not know who to ask. And I think that, that's really what is motivating me, is I want to go back to the students and find out what are they needing. I come from a family who is in service. My father is an Air Force veteran, my mom retired as a para educator. And continually to this day, they are still serving while in their seventies. I became interested in the Lawrence Public Schools when my stepson came to live with us and he joined, he started high school. When I kind of started learning and following the school board. I now have a one-year-old granddaughter who will be in our school district in here in a short few years. And I want to make sure that our schools are ready for her. Thank you.
Next we have Brandon Moore.
I've got a lot to say, so I'm going to talk quick. We all know that there's a lot that needs to change in order for Lawrence to get back to having a best-in-class school district. The board should be the voice of its electorate. We should be hearing from you, the students and the teachers, not through surveys. We need to be accountable for each of our votes. There should be a record online sharing each board member's votes on every single issue. Dr. Lewis gets paid $230,000 per year. Teachers make anywhere between $42,000 to start at $77,000 at a max. Dr. Lewis receives 20 vacation days, 12 sick days, and 11 federal holidays for a total of 33 days off per year. I don't know about you, but I'd like to have a month off every single year. Also, the board chose to extend an initial $9,000 directly to its 403B this year so that it wouldn't show up as a salary increase. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting a different result. There were two resignations in the last 18 months on the board, and those board members simply said they chose to do two replacements because they had previous school board experience with this board. And I would say this should not be a good old boys' club. We need fresh, new ideas to be able to make the change because the ideas that they have don't work.
Thank you to all the candidates for participating on board today. I'd like to invite everyone to visit with the candidates. And also, there are refreshments out there from some Black businesses in Lawrence, so make sure you drop the trash on them. You can drop the check or registration. And I'll talk more about the N O S C P, Black Liberty, and Lab Light. Our City Commission for Yen and Green Block, thank you.